Call this meeting to order of the City Commission of Rio Grande City, Texas. It's Wednesday, June 15th, 2016, approximately 6:04 PM. Here at Commission Chamber, City Hall, 5332 East US Highway 83, Suite A, Rio Grande City, Texas. This time, can we have the invocation by Commissioner Ramirez, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Jones?
Heavenly Father, we have to please guide us and give us the wisdom as we go through this agenda and make the best in for this community. In your name we pray. We pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with its origin and justice for all. Honor of Texas flag, where it is to be seen, Texas, one nation under God, one entity visible.
Next, business in orders, item B, roll call and finding of quorum. Ms. Guerrero?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor De La Vía?
Present.
Mayor Porche, back there.
Here.
Commissioner Salinas. Is Commissioner Ramirez?
Here.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Do you want to call?
Thank you, Ms. Guerrero. This time, if we can have a moment of silence for the victims of the Orlando shooting, please rise. Thank you. Next business in order is item C, departmental reports. Ms. Reyes?
Mayor Commissioners, you do have the reports on your packages. Summer months usually tend to be kind of slow in the city. We have most of department heads and employees taking their vacation. They are still gearing up for, in the tourism department, for Freedom Fest on July the 2nd. And although we just finished congratulating our graduating students, we have departments that are already working for the new school year. They've got activities going in partnership with other agencies, such as the backpack. Tomorrow, they'll be helping to fill up 900 backpacks with, and this are for seniors in all the school districts of the county.
So united way at the MPC.
Yes, you're correct. We also have another activity going on with the departments, and this is mostly the library and the police for shoes. Then you've got several shoes containers at the library and at the police. And this was done last year through an agency also that, I think the goal is 1,000 pairs of shoes. And so if anybody wants to donate any shoes, they can drop them off at this place. Of course, they have the criteria of the different sizes. So just so you know, you know, the departments are still working in community activities. We've also had the whole schedule of, the whole month of June scheduled for department meeting budgets. We're also gearing up to work on each department's proposed budget for the following year. The plan is to have a budget for the year 2016-17 filed at the City Secretary's Office by July 29th. From thereafter, then, we continue with the public hearings, ordinances, until we have a, an approved budget and tax rate by mid-September. The departments are present. If you need to ask any, any questions.
Do you have any director that would like to say a few words?
We had the, I guess, the, we did receive two fully equipped units and Commissioner Jones, Commissioner, we also got SEALs vehicles and, right, we got those vehicles through Operation Stone Guard, which is distributed to the, to the Sheriff's Office. And they're two fully equipped units. It was $113,000 total in those vehicles, and you know, they, they should work for us very, very well for the next few years. So, you know, if you all want to see them, we could get it over here, you know, if somebody wants to look at it closer, anybody in the department, you know, they're brand new, 2016's. We're just missing the, the computer systems in them, which is CopSync, and you know, they're fully functioning and they're ready to go. They're already using them, so you know, they have new graphics and you all got to see them, and you know, the guys are excited to have them, so that's what we got. Another thing I wanted to mention was that I got a call in middle May by Commander Rodriguez from DPS, and they had heard that late Officer Ramirez, Detective Ramirez, was buried in the Vela Cemetery. And we actually, we went out there, we had Commander Rodriguez, we had the, one of the majors from DPS Rangers, all the DPS majors were there, the Border Patrol, National Guard. We cleaned that cemetery. It took us a few hours, we were about 30 people there. And I just wanted to give recognition because, you know, this came from them, and you know, some of us got together and we also went to go clean, Eva Roinas, he was also investigator for the Police Department, his, his plan in La Ruya. So, you know, I think that was a great effort on their part and everybody else assisted, and I just wanted to let him, everybody know what was going on. There were some pictures, we just got them, so I'll get them to Chris, so you can put it up. And on another note, we got approached by Luis Rios, he's the director for the Housing Authority, and they have a building there that we can utilize, you know, with, I guess, maybe a dollar a year, we need to get the paperwork together and set up, and that would be, you know, they, they want us to use it as a police substation. And that's by the post office where Nixon Housing Authority is, and that would give us some midway in the, in the city. And I actually showed that to Commissioner Rios and Commissioner Jones.
It's a nice, well-kept facility, you know, for what they're offering for us, and I think it's, they're a global thing, you know, to be able to try and.
It's got, it's got good parking, it's got our camera system, it's got good lighting.
Right.
It's in a heavy traffic area, you know, and sits pretty much in the middle of town where officers can be spawned out of there, and it's also a, a very comfortable place to, for report writing and.
Right. It's just a good center point, and it's good for their area also. I'll, I'll get everything to Ms. Reyes as soon as I, I then know if they fired her about it, and we just, I think they're trying to drop some paperwork, their attorneys and stuff like that, and we'll push it through the.
You look at it as a great opportunity to have the program of community policing, like of the cops program, and also our Crime Stoppers, Neighborhood Watch, it's an excellent area to, to have those programs. I think they would be very successful out of that site.
Yes. How many square feet is the?
I think it's about maybe 12, 14 square feet. I told Mr. Rios to give me all that information, how, the size, it has two rooms, a locker room, male, female bathrooms, got a kitchen, and a, a good sized little, like a meeting area, it's pretty good. So we can fit three, four cars there, and you know, it's got two options, you could sit up like four computers there, so it could be very useful if, you know, if it does happen. So, you know, that's what they're talking about. So we should have something by next week.
The which building is that exactly, that one to the east or west of the post office?
It's on the west side of the post office.
On Nixon Street, up on Washington Street, where North Quamb is more than.
Right. It's right next to the Dollar General, you know, west side of that, toward the back. So, you know, that's what's coming up. That's all I got to report, unless you all have any questions.
Congratulations on two vehicles.
Thank you, sir.
If they are riding and, and you can't beat me.
No, you can't. You got a new car, so.
The price tag was $113,000?
Both of them together with all the, the computer systems, radars, the cameras, and you know, everything else that comes along with it, it was $113,000.
So $113 plus a dollar is for the space of the substation?
Yes.
No, you, you just got funded another grant through Criminal Justice Division?
Yes, we're, we're also working with, we're bringing on a crime victim's position and also the interdiction that, we're just pending some, some returns on that, and we also have Stone Cart, Stone Garden coming up, which is a little bit over $100,000, so, and then we're also waiting on border service and see what that's going to turn out. So we got several grants working at this moment, that we're working on, so.
Well, what, so the substation, that that will be 24/7 or that it's going to be part?
We, we would use it 24/7. You know, they would come in and out of there, depending on what they got going, and we'd utilize all those areas because the east, the west side of town and the center of town are important. You know, it's a, it's a very easy access when there's a lot of traffic. So we would be using both of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, Mr. Pique. Gerra?
Yes. Mayor, City Council, just to let you all know, we're still doing some larva sighting for mosquitoes throughout the city, in Zone A, Zone B, and all the zones that we have throughout the city. And spraying also, some areas, we've been spraying some for mosquitoes also in some areas. And on that concrete work on Sixth Street, it's, hopefully by the end of this week, it's going to be completed, this coming week, I'm sorry, this coming week, is going to be completed. On McRanchita Road, we got it done yesterday, I believe, and it's open for, for today. Today was open. It's ready for, for everyone, you know, to be used, so. Brush, oh my God.
What a waste.
Yes. We're still working on the ways, with, I mean, east side of town. We're working on the east side of town, from San Antonio all the way to the city limits, so we have plenty of area to cover within this next two weeks. So, we've been there.
How's the solid waste take of hurry or schedule?
Mayor's working. I've been, Aviel has been, Aviel Sainz has been helping me out throughout all this time time, and you know, with the solid waste, it's working out good. It's working out good, so we're getting there. So, just to let you all know.
I've noticed, I see, you know, we're doing an excellent job with the, we, we pick up, you know, the city looks a lot, a lot cleaner than what it was. I think you got with the, you know, I know that we're undersized and, you know, we're trying to keep up with what we have, but it's going to get better, so.
Okay. Yeah, then thank you for also for those greenwich supplies on McRanchita Road. I know that has helped tremendously with the people speeding down that road, so it's a really, really big help. Thank you so much on that. I had a question also on, Ms. Reyes, earlier about the tires. How does that work? Who picks them up and how do they get disposed?
We take them out there to the transfer station, sir, for them to be disposed properly. Yes, yes. Hopefully this time around, we'll be trying to get a better deal with some of the companies for the tires.
We want to base a particular shirt, because I'm not, you know, there was no gentleman in front of, but who quite that serves to us, I wasn't sure, but I'll find out.
Yeah. We're checking with, we're checking out with these people, so we can, hopefully we can get a better deal on, on the prices.
Thank you, Mr. Gerra, for taking on that. I know it's a big challenge as far as bringing in the solid waste, but your team and staff have been doing a tremendous job, so again, thank you, sir, for taking on that load.
We have assigned the sanitation directors' duties to Mr. Aviel Sainz. We've allotted him a stipend, since we're in a temporary situation, so he's gone as, taken some of the burden off of Mr. Gerra, move with all the TCEQ permits, making sure the trucks are out there and running. These are, this is a daily task. It's a new, something that we're learning as we're doing every day, but I will say that we have not received not any complaints on the service provided by the city service on solid waste.
Very good. I must say, it looks very nice as far as the trucks with the city logo. They look great.
It's a great logo there.
It is. To have it on those trucks, and hopefully in the future, we'll see, have more of those, even in the bins with a nice logo, well, we'll see. Thank you, Ms. Gerra. Any other, anyone else, Ms. Reyes, that would like to share the wonderful things that are going on within your department?
Well, they're all working, sir. Are you going to see them? And I know that there's a Freedom Fest pageant on the 24th that's coming up. This is the first ever for the city, and we'll be representing the city at, at the city event. I know that even finance, they've made a lot of headway in the audit, so hopefully we'll soon see the audit within a couple of months. I know Dalinda received some good news this morning through the USDA.
Guian?
Mayor Commissioners, we did receive good news from USDA on a grant through their Rural Business Development Program. Our EDC was granted $300,000, and we're very, very pleased. There is a project description that we have reviewed with EDC, it's been brought to the council for the purchase of land, and so we're just excited. I think Elisa and I have been waiting for, Ms. Reyes and I have been waiting for these, this good news. In addition to that, we have some notice on the skate park, that's one of the projects that the EDC has contributed to, and they're expected to bring in some of the parks that are finishing out the project later on this month, on June 20th actually, so we hope to capture some of those photos, because the park won't look the same after it's complete by the end of the month. So we're very pleased with that progress. And of course, for those of you that attended the EDC Board Meeting last week, we have gotten permission to proceed with a plan for restoration and work on the sidewalk at Cafe Mexico, and we've been working with our engineer to get those plans going, and the family members of Cafe Mexico, this is a project that has been in the works for some time, and we're very pleased that we'll be going out for bids very soon on that.
Thank you, Ms. Guian, and that is great news, $300,000 grant from USDA, great publicly recognized Commissioner Ramirez for your leadership with EDC, certainly yourself, Ms. Guian, and all the EDC Board members for making that happen, $300,000, so I mean, that's, that's great news. Thank you. Any other department, or Ms. Reyes, anyone you would like to recognize at this time?
We gotta know with their summer reading program, now the party market is also. Just real quick, we are keeping up with our summer reading program. We have 70 children attending regularly. We have, this year, we added an adult's summer reading program, and we have some programs with AgriLive and also MHP Salud, which is a nonprofit organization. And MHP Salud also helps us with people that need to fill out applications for affordable health care, if they need information on filling out the applications, if they need help with Texas benefits, food stamps, Medicare, Medicaid, any of that, if they need help with translating an application, we do have that service through them, that are, that people can come to the library and they'll get that service. And at the end of the month, we will be having our certificate party and summer reading program party, that I would like for you all to please stop by and see the kids and congratulate them, they've been reading a lot this summer, and, and the teen program also has been going very well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Foltz. Appreciate it. I see on the numbers, Ms. Foltz, that you really get a lot of people out there, which is great. And any of the commissioners and myself would like to read for anyone, know that we are available, and I'm volunteering them as well, so let us know. Thank you, Ms. Foltz. Any other, anyone else? Chief, in reference to the sandbags, how are we doing there? How many do we have? Knowing preparation for hurricane season, it's right upon us, so.
Yes, we have everything ready, set up, ready to go, actually. We haven't made them yet, it's there, just to be made. Obviously, we're going to use the, the property over there by 14 acres, and, no, we're just ready, anything does happen, we're, we're ready to go.
How many bags do we have on camera?
Uh, right now, they come with 10,000. We have about five, and they come about.
Yeah, we've got about, probably about six, seven thousand.
Yeah, roughly 1,000.
You start.
And we have some there at the fire department, that's what we have, the bags itself.
Because of urgency, how many bikes for family, do you guys allow them to get picked up?
We've been doing five passengers, that's, that's the minimum. Businesses, we, we tend to give them 10 for business, five for residential.
Great. Thank you.
As you know, Mr. Crowder's is not in right now, he is attending the, the last game for the adult softball tournament, one of the programs he had this summer for adults, but we right, right now have 157 registered kids at the Boys and Girls. They're having a great time. The second summer session for the Gus and Goldie's already filled up. We now, we have only two more sessions left. There are four two-week sessions with the Gus and Goldie program, so. Anyone goes by can see that the kids are having a great time. And you'd think that'd be all chaos, but it's not very well organized. We have a good staff working. I do want to thank also all department heads, because we're nearing the end of the budget, and they're feeling that the strings get tighter and tighter, but they're managing still to bring all the services to the city, so I want to thank you all, all your hard work.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? All right, let's move on. Next, business in orders, item two, consent agenda. That's all matters listed under consent agenda are considered to be a, to be routine by the commission and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items, however, if discussion is desired, that item or items will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Have items A, B, and C, approval of departmental travel requests, B, approval of minutes from previous meetings, and item C, approval of EDC action from meeting of June 7th, 2016. This time.
Is there proper funding, Ms. Reyes, for the travel?
Yes, sir. Everybody is keeping within their budget for the travel.
In that case, I'll show them, we'll pull it out, Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Have a second, any further discussion? Further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. Next, business in order is item three, resolutions. A, discussion and possible action to approve resolution number 2016-15, Code of Conduct for Federal Grant Procurement Process.
Mayor Commissioners, this is part of the compliance we have with the Texas Department of Agriculture as we receive their funds to pave the three streets. This is all in relation to the situation that happened with Crystal City, so now they're having all cities comply with this. I do have Ms. De Sette, who is taking care of the TDA project, if you will need some more information on this.
Thank you, De Sette. Anything you'd like to share in this project, De Sette?
Just approve the resident.
Okay.
We'll be able to start our project.
Thank you. Do you have a resolution? Do we have a motion?
I have a vote.
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a second, any further discussion? Discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Next, business in orders, item four, City Manager's Report. Letter A, discussion and possible action to designate Laura Garcia, Tax Assessor Collector, to calculate the effective tax rate and rollback tax rate for tax year 2016.
Mayor Commissioners, this is the same agreement we had last year. Ms. Laura Garcia has been doing this for the city since we started having proper taxes. The tax rate she will be probably submitting to the city will be around mid-July, no later than July 25th. I know the appraisal district has been going through a lot of appraisal review, board meetings, evaluations being contested, and I think they have the deadline at the end of this month, June 30th, I want to say that. So until that is cleared up, then can those evaluations be presented and an effective tax rate be prepared through the calculations that Ms. Garcia does and presented to the council?
Ms. Reyes, is the city ever considered, I guess, by our own person, collect taxes instead of having to ask somebody else or another entity to do, do so?
Yes, sir. Conversation we had, I had with the mayor, and I've made several inquiries into the Controller's Office, into the Attorney General's Office, and TML. The last one is now that we're having with the delinquent tax attorney, so they can start setting this up for the next year. We would have to send one person to get certified, Registered Tax Assessor.
Will we have to hire an additional person to do this out, or you got, you somebody who can put them in the department?
I would see using someone already from the department. Collection would probably be done through the Public Utility Department. This is done similarly as in Roma, where at, where they pay the wire, they also pay the taxes. It's just coded differently when it's entered.
I understand that we pay the school district 6% for the service.
Correct.
So that 6% must, must mean as much.
It's over $100,000.
$100,000, so that you can hire your own people, and it's, I mean, it's a great service, and I appreciate that, like the school, and of course, Ms. Laura Garcia has a great job, you know, helping solve the situation, but I think that, you know, it's time to start looking at, then doing an old tax collection.
We're definitely, definitely are already at that size, and I think we have capable people and staff that can take the training and be certified.
But this time, we're not ready, however, within this year, we can start making the process to, for next year, have that in place.
Correct, Mayor. We've already kind of scheduled already for the workshop, there's some training workshops that they'll be going to.
Break.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
I have a motion, Mayor.
Have a second, any further discussion on this item? Further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Next, business in orders, item five, contracts and agreements. Letter A, discussion and possible action to approve the inter-local cooperation agreement for tax assessment and collection with the Rio Grande City Consolidated Independent School District for tax year 2016.
The same contract as last year, with the 6% fee on the taxes collected, and it is only for one year.
All right.
I have a vote.
Okay, have a motion to approve, we have a second, any further discussion? Further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Next, business in orders, item B, discussion and possible action to approve the execution of a contract for professional engineering services with Rio Delta Engineering for a street paving project, TDA Contract Number 7215419.
Mayor Commissioners, this is the contract, y'all accepted proposals, statement of qualifications, they were scored, Rio Delta Engineering scored highest. Since then, we negotiated an amount, it is a very reasonable amount that Rio Delta is charging the city for the construction of the plants, overseeing of the construction and closing out the construction of these three streets. This is a contract that is provided by the State of Texas, Texas Department of Agriculture. It is a sample, it's been reviewed by, previously by our attorney, Ms. Salinas. Everything is in order, we recommend approval for the plant track, $28,000.
Salinas, you already viewed it?
Yes, that's correct, Mayor, it's ready for Commissioner approval.
Okay. We have a motion?
Move.
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
Break.
We have a second, any further discussion? Further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
I have a question, Mayor.
Okay.
This street here, this, that's part of the project, the city doing project that we had done, do you have a second?
No, sir, the bond paving was for existing pavement that needed to be overlaid or maybe milled and just do another coat of asphalt. This have never had.
Brand new?
Brand new, first time paving.
Okay, I have one question, please.
We feel we might add another street around the area of El Arroyo. We, I know that Ms. De Sette spoke to Ms. Suzanne Bernard while she was at a meeting in Zapata, and she said that it was a possibility to add if, if the funds were available. Our engineer, or the proposal engineer has stated that it looks like we may have some funds available.
Subdivision?
Within El Arroyo. El Arroyo subdivision.
Oh, no, okay.
So we're going to probably look at it as an alternate.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Next, business in order is item C, discussion and possible action to approve the memorandum of agreement with the Rio Grande City Consolidated Independent School District for use of certain facilities for the Boys and Girls Youth Club, the Gus and Goldie Swimming Lessons Program, and the Summer Track and Field Program. Ms. Reyes?
Mayor Commissioners, this is basically a renewal for the Boys and Girls and the Gus and Goldie. The only item that's new here would be the Summer Track Program. We made an attempt this summer to start it, we kind of initiated it, but since we did not have this in place, we are going to have to wait until next year. My conversations with Mr. Gresch and Dr. Salinas have been that they'd like to include it in the agreement, so that it's for the summer of next year. The rest.
Well, I would like to recommend, Ms. Reyes, that the city school agrees that we maybe ask for like a two-year agreement or one year with a second year option to continue, because to go every single year, I think is a little, I think tedious, I think if we're going to continue this, this, I guess, programs, you know, throughout the years to come, then I think that we maybe need to go like in two-year, instead of one-year agreements.
Is that something that the school is recommending?
Did they mention, I think, that it would be nice, I guess, to, you know, bring it to a table for like two-year, you know, terms as opposed to one-year terms?
Okay, and the last conversation I had also with Dr. Salinas was that the 750 for the supplies to clean the pool, that that was going to be removed. Did you hear something like that, also, Ms. Gresch?
Not so bad with the term of the contract, right? As far as the details, as far as what we decide to, I guess, pay or not pay, it, I think that can be worked out with Dr. Salinas or Mr. Gresch, but as far as the, the use of facilities, or the agreements you take to a board, then have it appropriate a two-year term, or one year with a second year option to renew or not.
Okay, and I know that they, they'd like for the city to take action on this, before they do, it's, it is coming up for their July meeting. We need to get something in place in order to have our continuation.
Yeah, I think for now, we can go ahead and do this one year, and in the future, we can, I guess, plan for that, but for, for the purpose of today.
I mean, we're already using the pool and the Boys and Girls Club building, and I think that they cannot, they not get a proof because of the timing, and it was a track program, or the summer track program.
Okay.
I'm thinking that they cannot, they're not getting proof of the timing of it was a track program, or the summer track program.
So are we looking at putting in your recommendation for the option to, to renew for another additional year? Because the agreement that's in place here in the package does not have that.
No, I think that we can, Ms. Beas, but include the summer track program and then, you know, start everything with a two-year term.
Actually, this is through summer, from August of 2017. That's this summer program, the fall, after-school program, and the summer program next year. On the first, on the track and field?
On the first, the track and field did not get approved because it was not taken to a board on time.
Alright, so we want to include that third, two years.
Okay.
Are we looking at approving this with conditions or pending school board rule? They might come in with changes.
If we can, if we can take it ultimately to the board, I mean, we can recommend that they through the summer track the following summer. I mean, I know this is a little late, but maybe next year we can include it as part of the programs that the city's gonna offer.
What's your recommendation, Ms. Beas?
So then we'll forward this agreement and we'll continue to keep the summer track program, but for the year 2017. We've already covered for the Boys and Girls for this year and next year. And that also includes for the Gus and Goldie this year and next year. We'll leave it as it is, as it's being presented, except for the changes on the summer track program for it to be 2017. And that would be my recommendation, mayor.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion to proceed as Ms. Beas' recommendation. We have a second. Any further discussion on this item? Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries. Next, business in orders, item six, planning. Letter A, discussion and possible action on setback variance request by Juan Reynoso for property located at 126 Santa Maria Lane. Mr. Milan?
Mayor Commissioners, good evening constituents. This is a setback request for a proposed addition, a recreational two-wall area for, with a bathroom and barbecue pit. Planning and zoning approved on their meeting on June the 2nd. This is on Alta Vista Subdivision, 126 Santa Maria Lane. The main concern for planning and zoning was to get it out of the Eastman and so it is out of the Eastman. It's not encroaching into the utilities.
It's not encroaching on the Eastman or any of those?
That's correct, yes.
And it was reviewed and approved by planning and zoning, so.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Ask a moment, Mr. Milan.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. We have a second. Any further discussion? Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries. Next, business in orders, item B, discussion and possible action on request for wine and beer retailers on-premise license by Erica Flores on 1639 East Highway 83.
Mayor Commissioners, this is the building behind Dr. Juan Aguileras Plaza. At the beginning, we had noticed it was within 900 feet of the school's main door entrance. However, one of the suggestions by the planning and zoning members was to use one of the side doors as the main entrance. They're considering it would meet the distance requirement, so it did. So at this point, it does meet, thus ways, they're not asking for a variance at this point.
But this time, there's no need for a variance because the main entrance will be.
Correct, it's over 1,000 feet.
And it was approved by planning and zoning.
That's correct.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Have a second. Any further discussion? Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries. Next, business in orders, letter C, discussion and possible action on request by Rio Delta Engineering for preliminary approval of Laredo Estates Phase Two subdivision.
Mayor Commissioners, this is Phase Two, as you said. This subdivision is on Embassy Street. It's within our one-mile ETJ. It was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission again on June the 2nd with conditions. However, they gave the option of the developer to apply for variances should he request them. And as stated by a letter, he's applying for variances. However, the variances before going to final approval had to be pre-approved by planning and zoning. Again, they recommended preliminarily. At this point, with the options of applying for variances before planning and zoning, before final approval.
Great, so at this point, they approved it preliminarily, had all these conditions.
Yes.
And condition, of course, with a variance, but to go back to planning and zoning for the approval at that point and then, okay.
Yes, sir. The conditions was that Rio Delta soon applies for street width covering order and sidewalk requirement by the city under model, Chapter 13's Model Subdivision rules.
We have a motion? Okay, we have a motion to approve. Have a second. Any further discussion? Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries. Next, business in orders, item D, discussion and possible action on request by Gilberto Falcon for mixed beverage restaurant permit for Chase Bar and Grill located at 601 East Main Street.
Yes, mayor, this is the old Chase Restaurant, La Porte House. It's been licensed not too long ago. However, it's changed ownership. That's why we're here to apply for a new license under new name.
It was approved by planning. Okay, we have a motion to approve. We have a second. Any further discussion on this item? Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries. Next, business in orders, item E, discussion and possible action on request for wine and beer retailers off-premise license by Jorge Olivares for business located on 308 East Second Street.
Mayor Commissioners, this is on, this, it used to be a mini-mart food store, this on Second Street. This is a cater corner to Marlene's Gallery. It's in the historical district. However, it was, it used to have a liquor license many moons ago. However, they wanna reopen the business. There's not many changes already than bring it up into compliance with building codes and the liquor license requirements, which they're following through the planning department. It is over 1,000 feet from the school.
We have a motion? Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries. Next, business in orders, item seven, appointments and memberships. Letter A, thank you, Mr. Milan. Letter A, discussion and possible action on the reappointment of Leo Lopez Jr. as municipal judge.
Mayor Commissioners, this contract is up for renewal or it starts on June 17th of this year. This is a two-year contract. There is no increase in the pay and staff recommends approval, sir.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. We have a second. Have a second. Any further discussion on this item? Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries. Next, business in order is item eight, executive session, chapter 551, Texas Government Code, section 551.071, consultation with attorney, section 551.072, deliberations regarding real property, and section 551.074, personnel matters. Items A, B, C, and D. Right. It is 6:43. Okay, we're back from executive session. It's 8:10 PM. And for the record, there's no action taken on items A, B, and D. Do we have a motion on item C?
I move that we proceed as discussed in executive session.
Okay, we have a motion to proceed as discussed in executive session. We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries. We have nine adjournment. We have a motion? We have a motion to adjourn. We have a second for the discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Meeting's adjourned. It is 8:11 PM.